To our clock, we are ready to begin the Raymore City Council Regular Meeting for February 23rd, 2015. Mr. and Ms. City Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Abdelgawad absent. Councilmember Boehner.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Mayor Protem Morehead.
Present. We have a quorum. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the regard for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda are presentations and awards. Would Ms. Denise Miller, who is the president of the Sunrise Optimist Club, come to the dais or come to the podium, please?
I'm Denise Miller. I'm president. I'm Denise Miller. I'm president of the Raymore Peculiar Optimist Club, and each year we'd like to, we honor an officer from the Raymore and Peculiar Police Department as Officers of the Year. I asked for recommendations from Chief Zimmerman, and an officer was selected, and at this time, I would like to honor him with, as Officer of the Year. Hi. On behalf of the Raytech Optimist Club, we'd like to give you this as the selected Officer of the Year.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Officer, it's Officer Earl Lencourt. I want to congratulate him again. Next on the agenda, we have personal appearances. First appearance will be Jody Houston, the Executive Director of the Raymore Peculiar Public School Foundation.
Hi there. Thanks for having me. I wanted to tell you a little bit about what's going on at the foundation currently. This year, for 2015, we have three major initiatives, actually four. We're doing Classroom Impact Grants again. We just had our Prize Patrol this past Friday where we gave out Impact Grant Awards, and there were thirty-three staff members that applied for the grants, and fourteen were selected, and that was in ten different schools. So, we had the best day of the year, and that's going around handing out money to the schools. So, that was a lot of fun. We also do senior scholarships. Every May, the committee selects ten students to get a $500 scholarship. We also do academic awards, which is the top student out of certain areas such as technology, practical arts, things like that, and they're selected and given $250. And then also ongoing is our Caring About Nutrition Program. That's our backpack program. Food goes home with needy kids on Fridays and over long weekends. Currently, we are serving eighty-three students, and that's in five elementary schools and the two intermediate schools. We also have pantries now set up in the middle school and the high school, and that's kind of as come and go as needed, as kids want some additional food. We also are kicking off our Major Saver Campaign. You might have seen that in your emails and stuff. We're selling the cards that have local businesses on them, and you can either see one of your, any of the kids that are in the schools, or you can come see me, or we'll have some at the chamber office as well. Some upcoming events that we have going on, March 28th is our Second Annual MAD-5K. We'd love for you guys to participate. You guys could even form a team. It's only $15 per person to be a team. That would be great. City of, City Council of Raymore could be a team, and that is March 28th again at the Raytech Stadium. We also have a gala coming up, April 11th. That'll be at Lock Lloyd. We're very excited this year. We're going to have great food, silent auction, live auction, a lot of fun. If you're interested in tickets, see me. Then, we also support annually the Teacher of the Year Support Staff Employee of the Year banquet, and that is on May 6th. And we'd love to see you at any of those events. And you can go to our website, which is the school website, and then there's a Foundation tab you can collect, click on, and you'll get all this information. Does anyone have any questions?
Actually, Jody, yes. First of all, I signed up and got my first Major Saver card.
Awesome. Good job.
Already hit up by the kids.
Good.
Number two on the Can Program.
Yes.
When you get on the website, are there, does it explain how people can donate?
Yes.
And contribute?
Yes. You can donate monetarily always. We, we put fresh fruits and vegetables each week in the bags, and a lot of times, those aren't donated. Many of our canned items are donated and things like that, but the fresh fruit and bread, things that are more perishable are not donated each week. So, we use that monetarily. And then also, each week, we have a menu, and there's items you can donate, and then there's things that you can donate year-round to the program that are just standard things. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Next up, we have Kim Pearson, the, our City Auditor with Dana F. Cole and Company regarding our fiscal year 2014 financial statements.
Oh, good evening. I'm going to stand back a little bit in case this thing kicks on here, but it is a pleasure to return back here again to present the audited financial statements. This is for the fiscal year ending October 31st, 2014. And with the audit package that you've received there, it is prepared as a comprehensive annual financial report. You can see with the number of pages there that it really is very comprehensive and has a lot of information within those financial statements. Last year's CAFER is what that's referred to, went under review with the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and through that review process, they were, they awarded the, the city and the finance department the Certificate of Financial Achievement. And this has been the fourth straight year that the city and the finance department has received that, and so that's a great accomplishment for the city and, and the staff that's worked on this. For this year, overall, everything went very well with our audit. The staff continues to draft more of the financial statements, and then they also ensure that the account balances at the end of the year are properly recorded. And so, as with our trend, we're continuing to move more into that progress with them doing more of the, of the financial statements. You will see in our report on internal controls that we do still as auditors draft a, a good majority of the financial statements, and so we do note that in our item that's listed in that internal control report. It's not uncommon for a city this size to have that, but it's just something that we're required to put on, letting you know that we did do assistance with that drafting. With our auditor's report, we did issue an unmodified opinion. What that means is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, and that's the best opinion that we can give as a result of an audit. So, again, that's a great accomplishment for the city. We have a report in there on compliance, and with that, we did not note any items that were reported or required to be reported on. And so, with all of those reports, that's a very good sign for the city and, and how the finance department is working with the financial statements. As you read through this audit package, there's a section in there that's titled Management Discussion and Analysis, and that's where I, I would direct your attention to at the beginning. What it does is it summarizes the financial statements, and it also gives some narratives so you can help further understand them. And then in addition to that, it has summarized comparative tables so you can kind of see the differences between the two years. So, that's kind of my, my presentation there to you. Again, it, it went very well, and I can take some questions, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you just spoke of where you directed us to look for. Do you have any, which page that we would?
Yes. I don't have the page number in front of me, but there's a table, there's a table of contents.
Okay.
And it looks like it's page eight.
Page 11.
Oh, no, that's, that's.
Management Discussion and Analysis is page 11 through 21, and that's basically the finance director's summary evaluation to you all. I, I would agree with Mr. Pearson. It's, it's, it's the, the finance office's summary analysis of what you're seeing in all of the tables. So, if you want to kind of boil everything down to a bottom line, what does this mean and what are we looking at? It is Ms. Watson telling you all, here's what the tables are saying. And the transmittal letter is also, which is at the very beginning, I mean, it starts right after the organizational chart. The transmittal letter from the finance director is always pretty valuable as well. With those two documents, you get a very good interpretation of what you see in all of the tables.
Thank you. The reason why I ask that is because even the summary is somewhat thicker than past years. And just to show the folks in the audience on TV, it's a summary of this, you know? So, you know, when this, when the summary doubles in size, you know, it just, there's a lot of information here, and it's always good information, and I appreciate your answers and thinking staff.
Pleasure, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
If you do have any, as you look through that, you can contact me at a later time, and, and we can discuss them then. So, once again, I thank you for having me here.
Thank you very much. Before we move to staff reports, I would ask that the City Clerk read into the record in entirety the entire adopted annual budget for, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, sorry. I couldn't resist the joke. Moving on to staff reports, Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, sir. I would ask that Mr. Krass make the report for the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor Protem, councilmembers. In addition to my written report, I'd like to update you on a few projects that the Engineering Department has been working on, as well as the Operations and Maintenance Division. We anticipate taking delivery of the paint striper in the next week or so, and once the weather turns and staff gets trained on the equipment, we will, we will initiate our annual striping program. Also upcoming at the next council meeting, we will be presenting our annual curb program for council to, to approve, so we can move forward with the plans and specifications for that. Our, the award of contract for our annual Influen Infiltration Correction Project, and a contract award for the Farmer's Market Depot or Shelter. So, it's kind of a snapshot of what is upcoming from the Public Works Department.
Any questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember Holman?
May I bring a bottle of champagne to christen the new paint striper? Sorry, I couldn't resist the chance to one-up you, sir.
Any additional questions? All right. Mr. Fearborn, any more on staff reports?
Yes, sir. I would ask that Mr. Ryan Murdock make a report for the Emergency Management Department.
Good evening, and thank you to Mr. Fearborn for allowing me just a couple of minutes. I asked for just a couple of minutes tonight to fill you in that we recently completed for the first time in two and a half years, a Community Emergency Response Team Training Course. We opened registration for that course in the middle of December. It was filled by the first of January, and we actually ended up with fourteen people on a waiting list for that course. I'm incredibly excited about it. It was held January 30th and 31st, February 6th and February 7th. Residents ended up completing about twenty-four hours of coursework over a variety of topics, from medical treatment to light search and rescue, to then how they can organize themselves within their neighborhoods and subdivisions, and then also on individual preparedness. So, we had twenty-two people who actually completed the course. That brings our total CERT membership right now to forty-six members, which is a large total for a jurisdiction of our size. It's something to be proud of because those are active members that we now have going within our program. For the course, we had Jennifer Fales from, and I just wanted to mention who helped us actually teach the course. I taught three of the units. Jennifer Fales from Kansas City Emergency Management came and helped us. Mike O'Neal from Platte County Sheriff's Office came and helped us, and the Assistant Fire Chief, Chief Norman also came over and helped us. So, it was incredibly beneficial for, for everyone who came. And the last thing that I kind of wanted to mention to the council is the variety of people that we had come to the course, which shows kind of how committed people are within the community to helping out, because we had nurses, firefighters, police officers, ex-military, church officials. I mean, we went the entire range of professions that all came to the course and worked together to complete it. We filled out volunteer applications, and eighteen of the twenty-two have committed to volunteering in the case of a crisis. So, that's a terrific turnout for the CERT course, and I just wanted to share that. Any questions?
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said that you turned away fourteen individuals that were, were interested. I, I'm kind of curious, what would the, what would you think the reason would be for turning those folks away? Is there a, a reason for us not?
Yes, yes, there is. There's a cap that we have to maintain for the course based on the training materials from the blankets that we use to actually practice carrying people all the way to the different medical gear that we provide to the students at the end of the class. All fourteen of the people who were on the waiting list were contacted. They knew that they were on the waiting list, and they've been offered the first spots in the next course that we actually will be holding coming up in the summer, and they also were given information on the upcoming Kansas City Emergency Management CERT course, which they would be eligible to take as well, and then come back and still join our program because they would still cover the same material.
Very good. May I ask, where, where did you hold your training? Where did you hold your, your, your classes?
That's a good question. You're looking at it. We held them, we held them right in here.
There's a reason why I ask this, but go ahead.
Yeah. No, we, we held them here in the city council chambers, and so we set the room up in kind of more of a table-like atmosphere, and then they did go outside to do some of the hands-on activities, including doing their fire extinguisher training and those activities.
Did our facilities, our makeshift facilities work adequately, or would, I'm going to ask you a personal opinion, okay? And, and please don't, don't look at Jim for this. I, I want your personal opinion. Were, were the accommodations sufficient, or, because here's, here's my point, is that we are going through studies to, to come up with a community center that, that would help facilitate this type of thing, that has classrooms and that. And I'm wondering if, if the future community center that, that we have envisions, if it ever comes to, to fruition, that that would benefit this, this activity?
I think it absolutely would benefit it. Was this room adequate for our needs for a training class? It probably was adequate. You know, we got great reviews on all of the evaluation forms from people based on their instructors and just the overall facilities that we were able to provide. You know, from that standpoint, the only thing that I would say, you know, I mean, was we were using temporary tables, you know, and those kinds of things. And so, there'd be some more permanent fixtures that would be very beneficial in terms of power and stuff like that, that we could have actually out in the middle of the room and stuff like that. But overall, the room worked out fine for a CERT course.
Okay.
That's what I would say.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the honesty and the answers.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Any further questions? Councilmember Boehner?
I have a question, just a comment. Having taken the CERT training several years ago, I would highly recommend it to all of our citizens. It's a great way to become involved with the community and to become a great asset should anything happen to us.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. I would ask for a report from City Attorney and Parliamentarian, Mr. Joe Willerth.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. For the benefit of new councilmember Burke, or those older councilmembers who can't remember from time to time, when we have the Mayor Protem preside as we do tonight, Councilmember Morehead retains his right to vote as a regular council member, but will vote on all matters. Then, as a councilmember, does not have the right to vote in the case of a tie, as a mayor would to have, to have a tie-breaking vote, and does not have any veto power, and that's provided for in Section 3.4 of the Charter.
Thank you, Mr. Willerth. Just a couple of housekeeping items for myself, sir. Thank you. Next week's work session, Monday, March 2nd. There are currently three items on the agenda. I do not see the agenda changing from this. Intergovernmental Agreement for Cooperative Purchasing Going Into Our Street Preservation Season. We're going to try to realize some, some economies of scale by seeing if we can hammer out an agreement with some of our neighbors. Intergovernmental Agreement for the Beginning of a Kentucky Road Study, and Private Parking Lot Maintenance, which had been before the council several months ago in work session, and you had asked for some additional information on the maintenance of our commercial parking lots here in town, and we have a fairly lengthy presentation relative to that particular topic. On a couple of technical notes for tonight's meeting, I have been told that the government channel is, through Comcast, is flashing in and out of service. So, if any of you hear from anybody who has Comcast while you're up there tonight, where they're working on it to try to get that particular item fixed, as I can guarantee you, we will be working on fixing that podium mic before the next meeting. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you. I have been asked this question. You just brought it up, and I will ask it. At what point will the meetings, can, can the citizens expect those to be posted onto the YouTube and, and that so that they can view them at a?
I think it's about, depending on the length of the meeting and how long it takes them to do whatever they do in the media room in there, it's usually, I think, for the afternoon broadcast of the meeting on the government channel, certainly by the next evening at this, at the seven o'clock broadcast for it, and the YouTube video and webcast is actually a little in front of that. Immediately after it's done in the, in the afternoon, those are up and ready to go.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda are committee reports. While I was not presented any, I would ask, does the Roundabout Committee have any update or status?
We have given direction to staff, and I believe that is coming before us in a meeting March 9th, yes. And there will be a formal presentation at that time.
Right on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next matter, Consent Agenda. I will entertain, oh, Mr. Holman?
I'd like to ask that Item B, Approval of the Safety Traffic Enforcement Program or STEP Grants be removed and considered separately from the Consent Agenda items.
Okay. That motion is in order? Second. The, I don't believe that actually requires a second, does it?
I don't think so. No. It's being requested.
I appreciate it, though.
So, to, I understand. So, to dispose of the consent, I, I will entertain a motion to dispose of the Consent Agenda, absent Item B unless anybody has any other subtractions. Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda, including Item A, City Council Minutes of the February 9th, 2015 meeting. Item C, the License Tax Review Committee Appointments. Item D, approving the appointment of a city staff member to the Board of Appeals. And Item E, appointment of Joseph Sarsfield to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The motion is in order. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Vote is unanimous. Now, we're going back to address Item B? Yes.
Point of order, just caucus here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield back.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Item B of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Item B of the Consent Agenda, Approval of Safety Traffic Enforcement Program, otherwise known as the STEP Grants.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. It is in order. Any discussion? Councilmember Holman?
The reason that I ask this to be separated, I just wanted it to be talked about a little bit for citizens. I think this is something that we take for granted a little bit when we get these kind of things, and it's great. We get money in, and our officers get to go out and do some work. But let's take just a sec, second about what that gives us, the citizens of Raymore. A lot of times, when we're safe in our beds, home asleep at night, our officers are able to be out on our streets protecting us from people who are sometimes making egregious violations of our public code by, by drinking and driving or aggressive driving. And, and this is a way that we can supplement our dollars and let those officers go out and focus on those duties full-time and target those violations, whereas they may only be able to do that for certain times of the day when they're doing the regular patrol duties, depending upon calls for service and other duties. So, this is just something I wanted to bring a little bit more attention to. I'm fully in support of this, but I just wanted to bring the attention to this item that it probably just kind of gets passed over as, oh, yeah, we got some grants. Great. It's a very important item towards the safety of our city. I've been one of those people back in the day that was out there in the rain and, and the nighttime, and Chief, we appreciate what you and your folks do, and just wanted to give you a little kudos for that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Vote is unanimous? To approve. I will, before moving to old business, I wish to exercise a little executive prerogative and make a personal comment. Item E, the Consent Agenda, was the appointment of Joseph Sarsfield, who is in attendance tonight. As a resident of Ward Two, which is my ward, I appreciate his attendance tonight and want to congratulate him. I served on planning and zoning, so he is in essence kind of following this, a similar path, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, as I hope he will enjoy it in the future. And thank you, sir, for your service to the community. Moving on to unfinished business, we have Item A. I would ask the City Clerk to read Bill 3041 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3041 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, adding Chapter 655, Solicitation for Charitable Donations to the Raymore City Code.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3041. Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 3041, Charitable Donation Solicitation Regulations.
I second.
It's been motioned and seconded. It is in order. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the vote is six to one. It, and passes. I would ask the City Clerk to read Bill 3045 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3045 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into an on-call surveying services contract with Huffman and Associates Land Surveyors, Inc., to provide on-call surveying services.
Entertained, a motion to dispose of Bill 3045. Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Award of Contract On-Call Surveying Services, Bill 3045.
I, I second.
It's been motioned and seconded. The bill is in order. I, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Ask Clerk to read Bill 3046 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3046 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Orr Wyatt Street Scares for the Farmer's Market Site Work Project, City Project Number 15-206-201, in the amount of $172,493.25, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
I entertain a motion to dispel the bill, dispose of Bill 3046. Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 3046, Award of Contract Farmer's Market Phase Site Work.
I second.
Motion has been presented and seconded. It is in order. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Vote is unanimous to pass. Ask City Clerk to read Bill 3047 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3047 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2015 capital budget.
Entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3047. Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 3047, Budget Amendment Farmer's Market Phase Site Work.
I second.
Bill has been motioned and seconded. It is in order. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Bill passes unanimously. Ask City Clerk to read Bill 3043 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3043 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the 2015 operating budget and reallocating the duties of the Buildings and Grounds Director.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3043. Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 304- Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve Bill three zero four three Budget Amendment Buildings and Grounds Director.
I second.
Bill has been motioned and seconded, is in order. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Ask city clerk to read Bill thirty forty-four by title only.
The second reading of Bill thirty forty-four by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the two thousand and fifteen operating budget and reallocating the duties and funding of the Community Outreach Coordinator.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill thirty forty-four. Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve Bill three zero four four Budget Amendment Community Outreach Coordinator.
I second.
Bill has been motioned and seconded, is in order. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item in the agenda, new business, ask for the first reading of Resolution fifteen eleven by title only.
The reading of Resolution fifteen dash eleven by title only, a resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the extension of the preliminary plat for Alexander Creek subdivision located in the northeast quarter of Section thirteen Township forty-six North, Range thirty-two West, Cass County, Raymore, Missouri.
Mr. Fearborn, I'd ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam, I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Alexander Creek Holdings LLC, which is represented by Randy Salee, is the current owner of the undeveloped land that remains within our Alexander Creek subdivision. The preliminary plan for this subdivision was approved back in two thousand and three, and subsequent to that approval, there have been four extensions to the actual expiration date of the preliminary plat. There were two different final plat phases that have been submitted for city approval in the subdivision. In addition to the undeveloped land, Alexander Creek Holdings also own the undeveloped lots that remain in the second phase. And that was a very large second phase that was initially platted, and there are still sixty-one lots available within that phase. Currently, Mr. Salee has, I believe, six homes under construction in that second phase, hoping that that will spear some additional home development on the remaining undeveloped lots. I did include in your staff report, the overlay that does show the floodplain boundaries of the stream, buffer setback that would be in place, Alexander Creek does cross through the subdivision. What's important about that particular stream is there is floodplain that goes along with that stream. And as you know, in our Unified Development Code, we do not allow any lots to be platted within floodplain area. So because of that floodplain area, there will be a de facto stream buffer in that subdivision, even though the stream buffer ordinance doesn't specifically apply as long as it's a valid preliminary plat. So I think it's very important to note that if we extend the preliminary plat, there still will be a buffer there because of the existing floodplain that is on the property. We had discussions about a year ago with Mr. Salee when he first purchased the property, about future plans for the subdivision. I know they continue to have internal discussions on what the future development would be for the undeveloped land. I do want to note that what a, if a final plat is submitted, that the land still needs to be in compliance, as I mentioned, with the flood protection code, but also our stormwater treatment code. So it would be technically exempt from stream buffer, as I said, but the floodplain will address most of that buffer area. Based upon that, staff does recommend a one-year extension to the preliminary plat. There, again, with sixty-one lots remaining in the second phase, it doesn't seem practical to, for future development to occur in the undeveloped area until more of those lots are taken down for home building. And now that we have an active builder, for many, many years, there was not an active builder in that subdivision. But now with Mr. Salee and all the lots in the first phase are now completed or under construction, it seems wise that the second phase will now take off and that there be some extension of time allowed before they come in for another phase in the subdivision. So staff does support the request in Resolution fifteen dash eleven.
Any questions of staff? Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, sir. Can you tell me how much activity there was within the subdivision in the last year since the last extension?
There's been actually quite a bit in the subdivision, of course. The six homes that Mr. Salee has done in the first phase under a different builder, there have been probably the same, probably six homes built within the last year. So a lot of activity, a lot of lots, again, that are existing, ready for purpose, are being taken down. But as I mentioned, we still have sixty lots, which is a lot for a phase remaining. But again, and Mr. Salee's here to explain further, but I know the, with the six that are under construction, hopefully it will add to future interest in the remaining lots.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution fifteen dash eleven. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I move that we approve Resolution fifteen dash eleven, the preliminary plat extension of Alexander Creek.
Second.
Motion has been brought and seconded and is in order. Any discussion? Councilmember Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the, this is just editorial and kind of heads up to staff to expect my phone In the agenda item memo, the diagram of the floodplain stream buffer orders, the color charts there, I'm going to go ahead with a yes vote tonight, knowing that this is going to require two votes. But I've got some concerns about what I see here, probably because of my confusion as far as the color code and that and everything. But just to give you a heads up, I see Mr. Fearborn with his hand, I think he knows.
This is actually a resolution, sir.
One vote? Thank you.
As a courtesy, Councilmember Kellogg, do you wish to extend more time to discuss?
I'd like to extend more time, but I don't want to hold up the developer on my own confusion here. It's no fault of his own. I have the confidence in staff. However, what is bothering me as a council member is that I live in Foxhaven, and I see a very similar situation there with that drainage ditch down there. Mr. Stevens and I have been fighting for about the last five years, and I don't want to continue another situation like that. And that is my concern here. Quite frankly, it would be, if I vote no on this, would be because of my past experience with those floodwaters back there. And what I see here is lots going into areas that really bother me, you know? But I totally understand and appreciate what the developers want to do there. And, but I've personally got some concerns, but the one thing going in favor is that I'm getting the confidence from staff to tell me that they support what the developers want to do here. If there's anything that I would ask the chair to do for me is maybe place this item on the last part of the agenda to give me some time to think about this through here, through my mind. But right now, as I sit here, I probably am leaning towards not voting for this because of what I've stated.
Mr. Fearborn, does staff have a wish to comment or offer some information that could assist Councilmember Kellogg?
I think we do, sir, thank you.
Mr. Catterett.
Yes, sir, thank you. If I may, two comments, and thank you for the questions and the comments. First off, some of our older existing subdivisions that were built near streams were built without the current code requirement we have where lots are excluded from floodplains. So a lot of our lots in existing subdivisions do encroach, when a lot encroaches into the floodplain, the house does not. So now with the ordinance we have in place, no portion of any platted lot can extend within the floodplain. So it does pull the lots further away from the, if you will, the centerline of the stream. So that's the first difference between what we have in place now than what we had in subdivisions like Foxhaven, Town Center, and others. The second comment, and I should have made this already, on the illustration that's in your staff report that shows the overlay, you can see that the current preliminary plat does have lots that encroach within the floodplain. This particular subdivision preliminary plat was approved before the ordinance was changed. But it does not allow, when a final plat comes in, for those lots, as you see it on this drawing, to encroach. So the final plat will look different than what you see in this preliminary plat. Again, the lots will be pulled further away from the stream and absolutely have to be outside the floodplain.
Thank you, Mr. Catterett.
Okay. Councilmember Holman.
I just wanted to say, I shared some concerns prior to the meeting, like Councilmember Kellogg, and I thought your report was extremely thorough and actually answered all the questions that I had. And I certainly see Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kellogg's, thinking back to the old days, Kevin, sorry. Just to look at the picture, you're like, wow, this stuff looks like it's underwater. And when you explain that when we get into the floodplain, that changes the game and the exemption really doesn't apply there. Also the fact, that's why I asked a question about activity, is this a subdivision that's been, that started struggling prior to the recession and has continued on and is dead, but actually you said it'd been active, and six to twelve homes either built or moving forward. That's a good sign, and I think a year extension is reasonable. I agree with staff, I thought your report sold me on it, and I thought it was a good job, so, if that helps.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Jim, do you think that any of these boundaries for the floodplain is going to grow over a period of time? I know that some of the houses that we have in Raymore have done that, and they've ended up in floodplains.
The current map, the current boundary line you see is the most recent that was prepared by FEMA. There, of course, could be an adjustment to the floodplain line. It would certainly have to be further studied when a final plat comes forward. So that's when we'll get the definitive boundary line and know exactly what areas cannot be built upon.
Any other comments? We currently have a motion that has been seconded. As a courtesy to council, in the comments, there was a request for the possibility of a postponement. I would entertain a motion to dispose or amend to postpone.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kellogg.
I, I'm comfortable. I appreciate Mr. Stevens' questions, especially Mr. Holman's comments, staff's comments. I would request, or I'd remove that request, to have it changed as the agenda, and I will apologize to the developer, if the developer is here, I'm not sure or not. These are some of these questions that come up, that, and I won't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I'll speak for myself, that, once bitten, twice shy, you know, I don't want to live through those heartaches and those conversations of a citizen again that buys a house and wasn't disclosed to by their realtor, and then they come back and they blame the city for allowing this and this and that and everything else. And it is just a muddy mess. And if I can ever avoid that situation that I've fought through in the past preemptively, I'm going to do it. But with the questions that have been asked and staff's candid and candid to see and honesty and all of that, I'm prepared to go for this. And again, I will apologize for any stress or anxiety that I may have caused, but that is part of my responsibility as a council member, I feel. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Holman.
Sir, you have no need to apologize, you're doing your due diligence as a council member.
With that, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution fifteen eleven, with no further discussion, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving to the next item, can we have a reading of Resolution fifteen twelve by title only?
The reading of Resolution fifteen dash twelve by title only, a resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving a revised city investment policy.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir, I'll call on Ms. Watson.
Mayor, council. What you have before you is a housekeeping item. The current investment policy was adopted by Resolution eleven ninety-four on December twelfth, two thousand and eleven. The policy requires an annual review, which was conducted by the city manager, finance director, accountant, as well as the city's financial advisor. Staff has confirmed that we are still in compliance with all state and local regulations revolving or involving investment purchases. We do require, or we are, excuse me, we are recommending a minor change in Section Five requiring the collateralization to include expected interest earnings over the life of certificates of deposit. Resolution before you has been developed accordingly.
Any questions of staff? I'd like, Councilmember Holman, please.
Pretty good, but could you dumb it down a little bit more for me? What's, yeah, I knew this was coming. Through that bait in the wall.
Sir, when you need it dumb, I'm the man to turn to, believe me. The short form of this is, we currently require any place where we place an investment, like if we put a million dollar investment with a bank, they have to collateralize to one hundred and five percent the amount of the investment. Now we are requiring them to collateralize not only the principal amount of the investment, but the expected interest that we might earn on that in case everything went bad the day before we were to clear that investment. We've already earned interest on it, we want that collateralized as well. And that's why Ms. Watson indicated, and the wording is expected interest, right? Because we're not quite sure what we're going to make up until the last day.
Okay. Ms. Watson, does this action fall within the boundaries of generally accepted principles of reporting? I mean, this is, so we're not doing anything outside of the norm here?
No, we're not. We actually are, Jim and I are way more conservative than we need to be. The state policies, GFOA policies, actually allow us to be more aggressive on our investments. We feel the safety of our investments is our top priority.
Okay. Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to resolve, to entertain a motion to resolve Resolution fifteen dash twelve. Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve Resolution fifteen dash twelve City Investment Policy.
I second.
Motion has been presented and seconded, is in order. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving on to Bill thirty forty-nine, read by title only.
The first reading of Bill thirty forty-nine by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Phoenix Concrete and Underground LLC for the two thousand and fifteen sidewalk gap program, City Project Number fifteen dash two zero nine dash two zero one, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, fifty-eight cents, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir, I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. The city's Unified Development Code contains a requirement that sidewalks to be installed on an undeveloped lot within a subdivision when sixty-six percent or more of the lots on the same side of the street, in the same block already have a sidewalk. In September of two thousand and fourteen, council held a public hearing for each of the lots that staff had identified as meeting this requirement. At the close of the public hearings, council adopted Resolution fourteen fifty-three, confirming the decision to move forward and directing staff to prepare plans and specifications for the sidewalk installation. Bids were received for this particular project on February fifth and are summarized in our agenda item memo, and we do recommend a Ward of the Contract to Phoenix Concrete and Underground in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, fifty-eight cents.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Does this really make sense now? It seems like last year we should have gotten most of the gaps filled up, and since we're getting a lot of the houses, housing projects started again, do we really need this? getting a lot of the houses, housing projects started again, do we really need this?
Actually, again, we're following the process that the council laid out and you all met last summer and these aren't, these aren't so much the city-initiated gaps, but these are the ones that meet the criteria of the 66% as Mr. Catterett had brought it up. The council, you know, this particular plan has been in place for about a year and a half. From the standpoint of, you know, our citizens who are out there, who live on those streets where, you know, two-thirds of the houses on the street are there, but a lot has been sitting for quite some time and you got to jump out in the street, or if your child is riding a bike down the sidewalk and has to jump out into the street to clear the lot. Staff does think it makes sense from a community standpoint. It's kind of a win, we think, for the citizens who live on the block already, for those who might be struggling a little bit as far as the funding is concerned to get it done. The city is fronting it and probably getting the economy of scale of bidding them all at the same time. It's a pretty easy payment method. They don't have to pay us until next January for the amount, but we will see the money back to us because of the format of going to the county to ask them for paying. So, all in all, yes, we do think it's a good program. We think it's, it's a, we thought it was a good enough program that we actually applied for the MML Innovation Award with this one, but we missed that one.
How many lots do you think we still have around?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Stevens, please continue.
How many more lots do you think we have, anyway? Can we just give a count?
Jim, how many are there right now?
For this program, there's 50 lots. So, we started with a double that when we started the program and we're down to 50 for this year. And of course, as I indicated, every year, it's a new program. For the current year, we're at, I believe, 24 lots. So, the first year, we'll have a lot of lots, 50. Subsequent years, the number will drop down, but every year, there will be new lots that are added onto the list, but...
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Jim just kind of hit on what my comments was going to be. I, you know, I think this is a good thing. The council has belabored this for some time and we have made this softer, a softer impact to the bulk of the folks that it could have been impacting. I remember 50% comes to mind and council came up with a policy of the 66%. Also, some of the things that were taken into consideration was the time length, extensions and this and that. And then we also had a night that we had a full public hearing of everybody that was going to be impacted and we had several that night show up that showed just cause or pleaded their case and council did give an extension in some cases and that. You know, and I commend staff and I commend this council for supporting staff and the policy to make this improvement for the whole city, but also keep in consideration and take the steps to make this as soft on the people that are going to be affected as we could. And I personally, I think we've hit a good note here because I have not taken any phone calls out of Ward 1 on this, but there were several that were impacted in Ward 1 and they've all been notified in that. So, I commend staff and I commend council for supporting staffs in that and everything we've done for this and I still support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Burke?
That's two weeks that you've got my name wrong. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I wanted to also speak in support of this. This is my first time as a member of the council to have a voice on this and as crazy it may, as it may seem, many students walked to Eagle Glen today. My own son, including, I don't know why he chose to walk to school today when it was this cold, but they do. And there are, on the way to Eagle Glen, quite a few spaces that there are gaps in the sidewalk on the way to the school. And I would like to encourage any member of Ward 2 to actually walk on the sidewalks, especially in the mornings when it's dark. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a comment as well. When we were discussing this, I remember there was a segment of the discussion where really staff was kind of challenged a little bit about the length of time, you know, that is being invested in this and questioned whether this could be expedited and actually, after good deliberation, a lot of good information from staff, we felt that really we were erring in favor of the homeowner to try to give as much additional time as possible. I do believe, and staff can correct me, that I doubt if anybody's going to be breaking ground here in the next couple of days on this. So, technically, a lot owner still does have the ability to quickly step in and remedy this issue or take care of this issue before this would go into effect. So, we have built in some safeguards there to try to be as considerate to lot owners as possible, so I'm supportive of this as well. Any other questions, comments? We have a, I believe we have only gone through staff report. We do not have a motion. So, I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3049. Councilmember Holman?
Mr.?
Actually, Councilmember Holman was recognized.
I was going to say, Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3049, award of contract sidewalk gap project.
I yield my time and I second the motion.
Thank you very much. Okay, but we do have a motion and a second, so therefore we are in order. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? It passes unanimously. Moving to Bill 3050, ask that be read by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3050 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2015 capital budget.
Staffordport?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. Excuse me. The sidewalk gap project, unlike our other capital projects, is a little unique where the project does not exist until the council awards the contract, which the action you just did. So, in order to fund the project, a budget amendment is necessary to amend the fiscal year 2015 capital budget to provide funding for the project. Staff is recommending a budget amendment in the amount of $141,217. This covers the contract amount plus provides a 10% contingency.
Okay. Questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3050.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3050, budget amendment, sidewalk gap project.
Second. Motion, or the bill has been motioned and seconded and therefore in order. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It passes unanimously. Moving to Bill 3051, I ask that be read by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3051 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with KC Master Companies for the City Hall Tower Stabilization Project, city project number 15-211-201, in the amount of $37,990, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staffordport?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. The fiscal year 2015 capital budget includes funding to stabilize the tower, which is located on the east side of the city hall entrance. Last year, in preparation of the CIP, we had a structural engineer look at the tower and determined that the appropriate way to stabilize the tower is through the installation of resistance piers. We received a bid from KC Master Companies. It was a, we only received one bid. We do outline within our staff memo the procedures that are followed when we do receive a single bid and those requirements have been met and we recommend award of the contract to KC Master Companies.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember asking questions about this some time ago and I'm going to ask it again, probably. Is this to stabilize it in the position it's in now or is it to put it back to where is plum?
The structural engineer that did the report did not feel that we would be able to get it close to plum. We'll work with the contractor and see what their opinion is of it. They also have a structural engineer that they retain that will also be looking at it. If we can get it back to plum, we will. Otherwise, it's basically going to hold it where it is.
Yeah, well, and I agree with that. My concern is, is that if it tries to go back to plum, the consequences of those actions, it really scares me. So, I just want to know exactly what, you know, what we're thinking about doing and that as we go on. So, and would, would we expect as council that if they do think that they can plummet back up, put it back into its place, would that increase the cost than what we are looking at tonight?
No. It's just a matter of whether or not the hydraulic jacks that they use and whether or not, whether or not we are going to disrupt it any further. I mean, it's, if they move it, it's really gentle with, as they jack it with the hydraulics. And so, it's really a matter of if they think the, there would be any more damage to the masonry facade if they try and move it from where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Crass, assuming approval of the project tonight, when would we expect work to commence on that and what do you think roughly the time length of the project?
There's quite a bit of excavation that needs to occur around the foundation in order to get access to the footing, so I would anticipate spring, you know, April, May, after the frost is out of the ground.
And the time length of such a project might be?
Couple of weeks.
Okay, relatively quick. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes, during that time, that is also the handicap access to the front of the building. Are there going to be provisions made, temporary provisions for handicap access to the front? Because I cannot see that that being accessible there for, you know, that's going to be a work zone.
But we do have the, it's the same thing that we had when we redid the front parking lot. We'll be directing people to the rear of the building where there is a complete ADA access and then to the elevator.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3051.
I move we approve the first reading of Bill 3051, award of contract to City Hall Tower Stabilization.
Second. Bill has been motioned and seconded and is therefore in order. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item F, I'd ask for the reading of Bill 3052 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3052 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2015 capital budget.
Staffordport?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. Staff is requesting to accelerate a project out of the 2016 Capital Improvement Program and move it into the fiscal year 2015 program. This project involves the replacement of the Johnson Drive Water Main. There is a segment of water main along Johnson Drive from Silver Top to a little bit past Rainbow Circle that is cast iron. It is well past its useful life. We have a history of breaks in there. We excavated as part of the stormwater project. I'm not sure what's holding this main together, but to minimize, and council has also programmed the reconstruction of Johnson Drive this year, so to minimize disruption to the neighborhood, also potential of disruption of water service, we are requesting that this project be accelerated so that we can coordinate all the work together.
Before I ask for questions of staff, I'll give one. By your comment of how it's being held together, totally justifies to me why we're accelerating. Thank you very much for that. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3052.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we... I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3052, budget amendment, Johnson Drive Water Main Replacement.
Second.
Okay, Bill 3052 has been motioned and seconded. It is in order. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. That is the last item on new business. Moving to public comments, I would, this is a time to open up for anyone in the public who wishes to come forward. Please come to the podium and keep your comments under five minutes. Please state your name and your address. Seeing none, we will close public comments, move to mayor-council communication. I do not have a handy dandy notebook of a calculated list, so I'm going to just rolling ball it. So, Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, sir. I've got about three or four things. One, my kudos to staff. You had a hectic and busy week and weekend this week and we held it together. Good job. Kind of a housekeeping note, I will be out of town with my work next week and will not be here for the Monday night work session. My intent would be to review the materials and provide comments back for someone to deliver if I have any. We had some scouts in the audience. They left a little earlier. I like to recognize when we have groups like that here. It's nice to see them. Congratulations to Mr. Sarsfield, who also just left a little while ago on his appointment to planning and zoning, and to Officer Lankur for his recognition award tonight. That was nice to see. The final thing really that I have is I want to issue my kudos to staff and to the council for the continued fiscal discipline we show each year. I have long time been a very big fan of Mike Shannon, a radio host on 980. He's no longer on 980, but he does the morning political show Ruckus on Sunday mornings. So, if you're bored or a political junkie or nerd like myself, you might want to catch it sometimes. They talk a lot, mostly about Kansas City politics per se, and the topic of conversation this past Sunday was the Kansas City budget and was pretty interesting. A lot of fireworks going on there, but in contrast to us, our larger neighbor to the north is looking at pay freezes for all their employees and we're roundly chastised by Mr. Martin Crosby, I believe, for the vast amount of what he considered to be waste into the millions of dollars that he publicly went after on that program. And the program, of course, is designed like that, but I felt like his comments were genuine. To me, that just reassures me that I live in a community where we do a good job, not just us, but the folks sitting out there and the rest of our staff and looking at our staff dollars and the use of those tax dollars and should they be spent. And that goes all the way down to the department heads and supervisors as well and their needs. I thank you again and I hope that we continue that policy going forward. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Thank you for chairing tonight. Appreciate it. You did a very good job. I will congratulate Officer Lankur also. Very good job. Very pleased to see that. Thank the obstinates club for hosting that award and all of that. That's very nice to see. This community thinks and expects a lot from our police officers and I believe they are very pleased with what they get. I want to say, well done. Well done this weekend. I'm glad everybody was safe. I'm not going to go into anything more than that, but I want you to know and I want your officers to know that I am deeply appreciative of all their efforts and everybody that helped. Thank you. It's very appreciated from the community standpoint. As far as to dovetail off of what Mr. Holman just spoke about, I couldn't agree any further and I will give you my commitment, as it has been since I've been on this council. I'm not changing, you know? I've been on this council where we've actually challenged our staff and done away with certain taxes. I remember when we did away with the motor vehicle tax, the sticker tax that came at a cost of $64,000. That's not chump change, you know, and staff didn't, staff didn't get any gray hairs out of it. They didn't run around saying, oh, you're going to devastate us, you're going to do this. They looked at us and says, you know what? We're going to roll with it. We're going to make this happen. This is council policy and this is, you know, we're going to follow through with. And that's, that's the attitude that this council member gets from the staff is that they're going to carry out council policy regardless of what it is. going to carry out council policy regardless of what it is. They do their best to give us all the information we can to make our decisions that we need to make, and they take those and they go with them. It's always been my impression that they've always welcomed challenges, and they go out and they succeed in them, you know? Another tax that I'll talk about that we have done away with was...I can talk about the exercise tax, you know? We did away with one of those. There was a point in time that it seemed like we were doing away with taxes every other month, and you know what? You're right. We've got a reserve. We had so much in a reserve that council took that reserve and put a million dollars aside, dedicated it for the upcoming community center, if we ever able to do that. So, we have a million dollars sitting there, ready to spend on a community center, and that is all attributed to our staff's ability to balance the budget and meet our expectations and policies that we set forth, you know? Now, I don't wanna throw rocks at Kansas City. I don't wanna throw rocks at our neighbors, but I do work in Kansas City, and I pay that one percent sales tax. It's pretty much equivalent to what I pay in my union dues, too. You know, and I remember being told the story that the reason for the one percent sales tax was to pay for trash service for each and every resident in Kansas City. Regardless if I'm true or not, that's what I remember being told. I drive through Kansas City. I see litter everywhere, you know? How did we do it here? Staff got their noggin's together. They came up with a plan. We come up with a community-wide trash contractor. I'll be the first one up here to say, well, Charlene will join me, because her and I are the only ones left that were opposed to that contract, but that's how we did it. And even though we did it, we saved our citizens money on their bill for that, you know? So, it's...I hate to belabor this, but I think it deserves the attention, that it isn't money. It isn't money that's gonna fix all these problems, you know? And I wish our neighbors would have the...I wish they had our staff, not...no, I wish they had to like our staff, 'cause I don't want them to have you. But I wish that...I wish that attitude and that mindset and that same thing carried over to our neighboring communities, because it isn't a money deal, in my opinion, you know? When we can sit here and I can rattle off sixty-four thousand dollars, just, you know, that went down, I think, at a vote seven to one, you know? It's...I don't wanna say it's not missed, but you know what? The citizens are not missing it in services, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kellogg. You were just about two seconds short of your five minutes here.
Thank you.
All good, all good. Councilmember Huber?
I wanted to thank the council for their support of the sidewalk gap project. That was very important to the people in our ward. There were four subdivisions that were affected, and they equal almost fifty percent of the homes that were on the list, so thank you, and I hope that you'll remember that again when we do the second reading that passed it. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boehner.
Generally, I'm pretty brief, and I think I'll probably stick that way. I don't have any comments this evening.
Okay. Councilmember Westco? I mean Burke? I had to do it.
That one was on purpose.
I had to do it.
All right. Now, you want me to talk for the whole five minutes?
He'll get me in the parking lot.
All right. Got a couple things. I'm a member of the Optimists Club, and I was proud to be represented by our president, Denise Miller, to give the award to Officer Lankur. That was well deserved. Secondly, I wanted to thank staff for the idea of moving the sewer project up a year. It's gonna save money. It's gonna save time. It's gonna save the residents, my neighbors, a lot of inconvenience. Instead of having one summer, two summers, if we had done the road and then tore up the road to put in a sewer, how would that make any sense? So, it's very good that some logic was employed there to not only make it a better idea, to save money and less inconvenience on the citizens. That's great. And the last thing I wanted to talk about this weekend, had a lot of people talk to me about Raymore, and it let me know how much I value Raymore. When my emotions get involved, when I...as some of my friends would say, I felt the Irish come out in me. Don't get my Irish up. When you start talking about Raymore, and you're not a member of Raymore, you don't live here, you've never lived here, it certainly...I realized how much I did value being a part of Raymore when I felt like that people were attacking a situation that they knew nothing about, and I feel like that the staff really represented Raymore in the right way, especially on the news. It was well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Promised I would heckle you tonight, and I kept my word.
You're good.
All right. I'll go ahead and finish up briefly. First of all, I wanna thank Denise Miller, and I wanna thank the Sunrise Optimists Club. It's nice to see when organizations such as that reach out to honor people in our community and Officer Lankur and the other officers, all officers that are eligible for this. It's well deserved, and I appreciate them doing that. I wanna give a brief shout-out to Jody Houston, who...and the Raymore Public School Foundation, or Ray Peck's Public School Foundation. That has been a very growing program. Every year continues to get stronger and stronger, and it's partially because of people in the community. So, I would strongly recommend you go to the website, as she stated, that you can donate not only specific items, but also money. She mentioned there were instances where they can purchase perishable items with money, which kind of supplement not only just canned food. So, please support that, and I appreciate the literature that she provided the council tonight. I wanna give an appreciation to Kim Pearson with Dana Cole and Company and staff on our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFER. I can state personally, as an individual who is currently being asked to participate in the presentation and development of this in another governmental entity, just how monumental and difficult this is, and the fact that we don't expect to be done until May, and we are already being presented in February is very telling of our staff, and the fact that we are in this four years in a row, 'cause this is a recognition that is actually not typically earned. So, I commend them for that. We had the Joint Cities Meeting last Wednesday, had a wonderful presentation. The mayor, as well as three councilmembers, attended. Good information shared by the school district, City of Peculiar, the county, ourselves, and it was a good event and very educational for us. With that, I would ask staff, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second. Motion is presented and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, fair enough. Still passes. Five to one. Thank you.